All right, time is six oh two, calling this meeting to order. This is the February meeting of the committee as a whole. We'll have roll call. John, here. Myself, and why am I drawing a blank?
Brittany.
Brittany, sorry, I was gonna say Lisa, it's not Lisa. Lisa on my phone. Okay. Approval of, uh, meeting agenda? I'll make the motion.
Second.
Second, all right. John and Brenda.
Brittany.
Brittany. I'll get it right before they have anything. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Student staff committee recognition.
We do not have any today.
All right, that brings us on to our sixteen, thirty, sixty, ninety day plan.
Looks good.
Good, Brittany? All right.
Yep.
We're good? I think we need to make a motion. All right. Certified employee compensation, pay scale.
John. All right, um, so... The reason I put this on here is last year, we, we did, um, talk about our, uh, support staff, uh, as far as a, a pay scale and getting things lined up with where they're supposed to be, um, in, in historical context. Um, one thing that we didn't take a look at yet was, was our certified staff or our teachers. And I know Leah and I have been talking about this a bit as far as, um, our... Things are kinda wonky with where, where staff are right now as far as salary and compensation based on experience and, and whatnot. And we were just trying to come up with a framework to help us level things out with our current staff, but then also have a guide for, for the future. And I wanted to get, uh, you know, some different ideas to the board to kind of discuss and think about different ideas. And, and what I have, uh, in front of you is just a few different, uh, considerations. And it doesn't have to be that, but it's... That, that's what, you know, some pay scales could look like, uh, as we look at, uh, compensation. Uh, the one on the bottom is, is a base one, but there's also more information that, that could be tied to evaluations as well. Um, so, uh, that would be the base. And then, uh, teachers that perform well by a evaluation could potentially receive a higher bump in that. But that's, that's something that we would have to take a look at and look through. Um, and, you know, so, as some districts do that, some districts have a straight, some districts don't. The other consideration that I would have for you is there's been a lot of discussion about, uh, Act Ten and the, um, unconstitutionality of it. I, I know that the court in Dean County deemed it unconstitutional, but it's been put on hold for now. And I know there's a big push to get this item in front of the Supreme Court, either right before or right after the April election, so... So if, if that does happen, I mean, there, there's a possibility that we would be looking at this anyway. So I wanted to start a discussion, do we wanna have something like this, do we not? Um, and if we do, what, what are some things that we wanna consider in this? Um, and just wanted to get your feedback on it. Another item that, that came up too is, you know, when, when we start talking about other staff, uh, when it comes into the teaching role, we, we have teacher assistants in our Montessori classrooms that frequently fill in as teachers. And, and I, I guess I want to get some feedback and, and guidance from, from the board as to how we handle that. Should we be treating them as a sub and get added compensation when they're filling in when the teacher's gone and we don't have a sub to fill? Or, or, you know, how do we handle that?
It's not only the Montessori.
Right. But it's, I mean, that's, that's the main one, but when we have that instance, you know...
I assume that we do that as a last resort?
That's correct.
I mean, rather than having a certified licensed teacher come in? There's nobody, then you have a paraprofessional fill in? Is that...
That's correct.
...in the practice?
And that was one of the things with the Montessori, that, that when they did their training, that that was the, the way it generally worked was that if the teacher was gone, that aid stepped up to that position because they also have the terminal knowledge of the day-to-day.
So are you thinking like a per day, like a per day compensation, not, not across the board? So in other words, if you, if you're the teacher of the day...
Right.
You might get extra compensation that day, but not at, you know...
Right, and, and it's, it's a consideration. But, but I, I will say that, you know, fro- from other places that I've been, there, there's also, you, you can switch between, uh, like a teacher's sub, but do they have licensure for it? Do we take that into consideration? And it's, it's a little more complex in that fact, because do we have some individuals that fill in but don't have a, a teacher's sub license? Yes. Does that matter to us? And, and how, I, I guess I'm just wanting more guidance from the board as to how we wanna deal with it. Because I, I, I feel like there's, there's some inequity in this, you know, when we have, you know, support staff that are filling in because we don't have any subs. But what does that look like? You know, so...
And the question is, how far do we reach that too?
Right.
Because like days like, is it today? Is this Monday? Monday last week, when Lisa was going and covering in several classrooms? So how far do you expand that? And then my concern is the adjusting, are we adjusting our other wages?
Right.
Or are we just doing an additional bump? Or how does that work? Is that...
Yeah, I wouldn't, like, it wouldn't make sense to me to adjust their base wage.
No, and, and that's what, what I've seen elsewhere, it isn't. It's, it's by day, so...
I mean, how, how, do you have a sense of how often this happens?
I mean, it's not typical, but it's usually, you know, if we have a day with, you know, unexpected call-ins, that's usually where we kinda get hit.
Yeah.
Um, but if we have advanced notice of when individuals are gone, we, you know, we don't have much of an issue, um, with filling those positions. So it's just kind of the more so those last minute call-ins that kinda put us in a pickle.
Yeah. Well, this is probably a poor analogy, but if a head coach gets tossed from a game for technicals and that the assistant takes over, I don't think, you know, why would we gotta pay the assistant more now?
Ri- right.
Not the best analogy, but it's, if it's infrequent...
Ri- right, because it...
I don't know.
Where, where, where I would say that with the coach thing, I mean, it's, it's very similar, um, in the fact that the assistant coach is assisting the head coach. But where I think it's a lot different is there's a lot more responsibility to know the things that go with that, jumping into the, the teacher role there and that supervision piece. So, I mean, I don't, I mean, there's a few different ways of looking at this, so...
So this, is, are you kinda looking at this for the next school year or this year yet? Possibly? Don't know yet?
I, I guess, I could go either way. I mean, at, at the, at the latest for next year? But, you know, is that something that, you know, we wanna take a look at? You know, from a certain date forward or what things that we want to...
I think we would be better off going next year because then you would have people wanting us to...
I know, it, it gets into a hard thing with retro.
And plus, it's not something that's been built into the budget?
Yeah.
And we need to build something like that.
And have the infrequent subs, are they like, hey, we need to get paid more when we take over, or is it, we're just looking at top down or...
No, it's, it's been brought to our attention.
Okay, okay.
I'm just asking that question, so...
I think it would make sense, like you say, man, you've already got your budget set for this year for compensation wages. You should build that into our budget.
Budget, and, and the handbook.
Yeah, and the handbook.
Right, that, I think that's, that's the big thing. I would, I would say, budget-wise, we're there because we're talking about sub day, but anyway, I hear what you're saying. It's, it's, it's hard, it's hard to delineate, you know, we're, we're partially through the school year and we're gonna say, oh, well, we're gonna change right now.
Right.
Sorry, yeah, I know you did that last month, but we're only taking...
Yeah.
You know, so I, I think that's where it gets kinda confusing.
I think it'd be best to have a, a prep and preparation for the next year.
Right.
Not drop it in in the middle of the year.
Right. So that's, so that...
Well, it gives everybody time, like, say, we had to prep and say, how often does this happen? You could look at a, uh, you know, how do you create a, a flow chart to say, how often has this happened and we've had to bring a paraprofessional up to a teacher's spot? And we could kinda estimate what our budget would be for that then versus...
So, yeah, we, we can take a look at, you know, all the information. I think the, the initial was just getting, getting your take on it. Is this something that you feel like we should get more information on and pursue? Put some different options together or...
I think it'd be good to get some different options.
Okay.
Put together on this and...
All right.
Do you want other schools input too?
Yeah, other schools input and what would work best for us.
Okay, that, that would be good. I appreciate it. Um, so, and then also just with the, the pay scale piece, is this, are, are there any questions or things that I should be looking at when we're potentially considering something of this nature?
Well, are you gonna be able to evaluate every staff every year?
That's, that's hard. That's hard.
Yeah. I, I, cause I'm, I'm, I'm for merit increases.
Yeah.
But it, it does put a burden on presumably the two of you to...
Right.
...rate every teacher, um...
How much staff do we, how many teachers do we have here?
And presumably paraprofessionals too, so...
The...
Or is that more...
I think that's, that's gonna be a separate bill. Um, I'll get more information on, on that merit base so we can have more of that discussion on the seventeen.
Yeah, cause that would be right about the tough part, how we get...
But it, I mean, it doesn't have to be a full eval like we...
Right.
Probably should have been doing three years, but that's another topic. Um, but, cause I, I know now it's kind of a cyclical, like you might do some, one group this year, another group the next year, and then kind of a year or whatever.
So, s- right, so educator effectiveness, how it's set up is, is to be a three-year rotation.
Three-year, yeah.
So you have your summative year on, on year three. Um, new teachers, it's yearly for those first few years. So I, anyway, I'll be on, I, I hear what you're saying and I can go back and forth, you know, merit versus non-merit. Um, I get concerned about the, the merit base because, you know, uh, when, when Act Ten was initially brought out, a number of school districts decided they wanted to go on a merit-based. And after some time, a number of them backed off from it because of how, how do you guarantee that you're objective in everything that you have? And also, does that create a rift between staff members, between meaning the cut and not meaning the cut? You know, so there, there's other politics involved in this. And I, and I just wanna make sure that, you know, I voice that piece, you know, as, as we consider different options. Like I said, I'll get more information on that merit base and how some other districts have handled it.
I have another suggestion, for us doing a chart. I feel like right now we should make a chart of what we have staff at now, what their education levels are to see how much maneuvering we would have to do to try and get adjusted evenly cause...
That, that's, that's gonna be the crucial thing.
Pretty tricky.
Right. The, the whole piece with this first is getting, just taking a look at different ideas here. And then, yes, we need to do some work on this, so... It is February, that's why we're talking about it now, because contracts will be coming up very quickly.
Contracts will be in April maybe.
So, and, um, and we'll be talking about that more with, um, you know, increases as we look at it. Right now CPI was, uh, two point nine seven, so... So it's pretty, pretty average in comparison to previous years. So, anyway. But, all right, so we'll get more information on that. We'll put together a chart to see where people are and kinda do some preliminary...
Yeah, and I'm assuming that one through twenty is based on number of years?
Right.
The steps, how long we've been here?
So, so the, the, uh, you've got the steps, which are the, the years? And then what, what's referred to as the lanes, which is referring to education level. And, and right now, our compensation has not been considering education level, so...
Really? We, we paying someone with a master's the same we're paying comparable in years as someone with a, a straight-up bachelor's?
Yes, that's right. So...
There were discussions on that years back, so I'm on some of that, masters and not.
Yeah, it all, it's automatic, you, once you get your master's, boom, you get X percent of the year.
Right. And, and there, there's, there's different ways of handling it. Is it a, a permanent bump or is it like a, a stay up and say, great job, thank you for doing that? I, I don't know, I mean, it, it's how, how do we wanna handle that piece? And I know that there's been a few topics that have come up, that's been one. Uh, over the past year and a half, I had three or four people ask about, do we compensate for obtaining a master's? So, yeah.
All right. Any other further discussion on that? All right. AGR update.
Yeah, so this is just information regarding our achievement gap reduction program and what we're currently implementing, um, in grades K through three. And so the reduction, the gap reduction program is just implementing, um, a few different strategies of trying to increase some of those, um, scores that we're seeing with our students. So as you kinda go through the slides, this year, our focus that we identified, um, with some of the fall data with our students, um, was fluency in vocabulary for our reading and math. And so that's kind of where the students, or the teachers are focused, um, in increasing some of those, um, lower areas. Um, so as you just kinda go through, um, you can see the progress, um, that students are making. And it's, it's been a learning experience and very interesting to see the beginning of the year and, and where we currently stand mid-year. Um, the other thing too, we kinda recognized is how the Montessori and the traditional have different timelines of when they teach things and how that can also influence some of this information as well. And so that's been part of the conversation of, oh, well, we haven't done this in children's house yet, but in, you know, on the traditional side, we have touched on this. So just kinda recognizing those things as well, um, when we review the, the student data.
So are, is the grant used for additional training for staff on hand or is it to bring in a reading coach from CISA twelve or something like that?
Yes, oh, go ahead.
They're typically, so with the AGR grant or the Achievement Gap Reduction Grant, um, yearly we have to report how we're using it. It could be used for class size reduction, which I don't think we have an issue with that, um, cause it's eighteen or less. Uh, another one is individual tutoring or instructional coaching. And, and I know that we've used some of that for staff that are providing, uh, intervention, but then also that goes towards CISA because they provide some of that coaching for us. Okay. And I threw out elaborate moron piece of that, so...
They actually pay CISA from AGR, that they provide some of the services.
And we're at least, we're seeing some results for our grant money or...
I...
Or to the two of you.
I, I would say that in the long run, yes, we're seeing that benefit, but...
Is it a state grant, federal grant?
I know it's administered through the state, that's who we're reporting to, so I can't remember if it's federal or tied to that.
I know any of the federal money, they like to see what the money's getting.
Right, right. So, s- yeah. I, I think it's eerily similar. I think it might have some federal, and it's administered by the state, uh, because like you said, we, we have, what we're obligated to do is provide a, a goal at the beginning of the five-year and at the end. And then yearly, we send in our goals, have a mid-year check and an end-of-year check, so, so they're tracking that quite, quite extensively, so...
And we've had that support since I've been here, so I feel like it's probably hard to tell the difference whether, if we didn't have that support...
Oh, this is not a new grant?
No, it's not a new grant.
Okay.
It's been, it's been these last twenty years, yeah.
Okay. Got any discussions?
Senior class trip, I assume that's what these challenge.
Yeah, of course.
He just came for the...
I think most people are gonna just show up, you know? Game going on. Why are they in here?
All right, so, um, yeah, so we're trying to get, um, our senior class trip approved. Um, I'll basically just give you the who, what, where kinda thing. Um, we're gonna have seven to eight students. Uh, we're waiting on one just cause it's further, you know, whatever. And, uh, we got two teachers, so a total of either nine to ten people. Um, the two teachers are Sarah Simonson and Matt Ryder, who are gonna be tending that with us. It'll be two nights and three days, and the dates are March twenty-seventh to the twenty-ninth. We'll be going to Minneapolis, Minnesota. Currently, we have two thousand nine hundred and fourteen dollars in funds, and we are putting a thousand dollars towards meals, whether that's us going up to eat, us going to grocery store and bringing back food and cooking the, or renting out Airbnb, so whether we're cooking in the Airbnb or going up to get dinner, whatever costs, those are all gonna be covered. Um, cause basically, we don't want any students paying for any of that stuff. Um, and then we have a hundred bucks towards gas. We did the math, it'll be plenty to cover for going to all the cities, coming back and whatnot. And, uh, we'll be using the school van as transport. Um, and we'll be doing other activities such as bowling, um, you know, cooking indoors, whatever. We're gonna be eating at a special taco joint that Guy Fury would, uh, just kinda some fun stuff like that. Um, and then we're gonna be doing another fundraiser here, um, in February, uh, the twelfth to the sixteenth, so popcorn fundraiser to raise some extra money, some extra funds just to make sure we have plenty, and that way we have enough for flowers after to buy for roses for seniors. Um, yeah, I mean, and then, uh, what else?
How'd you choose Minneapolis?
Um, cheap, lot of things to do, I guess, really.
Yeah.
I mean...
Probably less expensive than going to, uh, the Dells.
Yeah, exactly. So, and we figured, you know, instead of renting a bunch of like, a hotel things, room for everybody, you get a big Airbnb, you know, get a better bond with everybody and you're all hanging out in the house together and it's a better bonding activity than just being in a hotel, you know?
Yeah.
Something different, I guess.
Only eight of you going, is the rest of the class just choosing to...
Yeah, so, um, the reason I said seven to eight is so, right now, um, that's official because Clyde, I don't know if he has one, but he is the only one that says maybe. Everyone else said yes or it said no. And I asked the people who said no about six different times to make sure, you know, so this could be a really fun trip, you know, you don't wanna miss out on it, one-time thing type, you know, type of deal. And he said, no, it's okay, we're good, so, all right, you know, so...
So these are, these are students that are enrolled in school full-time?
And online.
And?
And online.
Okay.
One online?
Yeah, we only have one online person that's actually enrolled, so...
Okay. Well, that's cool.
Yeah, we made sure to ask Eagles Academy, Traditional, and Online, make sure everyone's involved, try to get everybody on. Cause there's still a senior class just in different places, you know?
Different places.
Yeah, exactly, so...
Were you looking for approval or...
Yeah, I guess.
That, that, that is, that is our prerogative, we have a forum, and so that decision could be made tonight, or how soon do you need approval?
Actually, I have a board meeting in about two, three weeks, so...
I mean, it'd be nice to get it sooner the better, I guess, just so I can, um, book an Airbnb, um, places are closing up fast, so that's the only reason, I would need it quick, be better for that. I'll turn it up, but other than that, there's no other thing I'm waiting on, so...
Okay, well, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Okay, well, John and Brittany.
All right.
Sounds like fun.
All right, you guys? In favor? All those opposed? Motion passes.
Good job, guys.
Thanks, guys. For the information.
Stay out of trouble.
Of course.
All right, next is Family and Customs Ed-based Teachers Job Description.
Job. So, uh, based on, on the decision last month in January, I, I put together a job description for this position, uh, just for consideration of approval. Uh, once I get that approval, I can post for this position.
So I have a question on a term we used. Culturally responsive instructional strategy, what?
So that...
Language term.
Right. So i- it's looking at different ways that we're providing instruction, uh, that's taking into account Native American culture and some of the, the techniques and, and, uh, strategies they use for consumer ed, cooking or...
Is that so? To comply with ACT, whatever it is as well, or is that...
It, I think it's just good practice. I mean, it's, it's, it's not necessary for Act Thirty-One, which is Native American stuff, yeah. Uh, but I, I think just where we're at and, and the, the heritage in, in our, in our area, I think it's wise to do that, so...
So an applicant wouldn't necessarily have to be well-versed in that, but they'd have to be able to know this, this is something we want you to address and instruct on, is get smarter about. Um, are, were they, like, the actual curriculum, is that something we would still provide or they're, go develop your own?
So, right, so, so we would have to, uh, work on putting that curriculum together. It'd be nice to have that teacher with us or that person with us, uh, to, to truly develop it, so... Not saying that we can't rely on other sources to get it, but it'd be good to have that person in there.
Okay, so are we looking at hiring over the summer for the fall term?
Uh, what I'd say is, I would like to post that as quickly as possible in order to try to attract candidates, cause we're, we're getting into the prime season.
Okay, but still, we're starting in the fall.
That's correct. We're starting in the fall. That's correct.
Usually this is the time to post because teacher contracts, like I know, some teachers might be looking for positions, college grads that are coming out, start looking at them.
And the only acceptable degree then would be a Family and Consumer?
That, right, that, that's what we'd be looking at. Um, there, right, so, uh, is there a potential that you could have someone on emergency license that's, has most of the qualifications? Yes, you could, um, but it, it still requires that license.
So that's a sec- a separate licensure?
It is.
Consumer education?
It is.
Okay.
Yes. Uh, the nearest programs that offer that is, uh, Stout and Stevens Point.
How much additional would that be over a regular teaching?
It, it's an initial, so.
Okay.
So, it, it would be the same as any other secondary or secondary teacher, so.
I was just wondering if we had applicants and said, you know, well, okay, I can work toward that, or is that?
I, I think we would have to take that into consideration as people apply, so.
Make a move or into?
So, that, that's, it, that, that's truly your call if we want to take a look at that, if there are questions, things that we need to address. Two weeks is not gonna hurt significantly, but I can say we will be a lot of students required, so. If there's other things under that you want to change or, or edit, you know, I can certainly, you can certainly look on that.
Where did this come from? Is it some other school using this as a?
This, well, I, I, right, so there, there's a lot of it that's standard from stuff that I've had previously. And then also, you know, looking at other job descriptions from other districts.
Okay.
Trying to put it all together, so, yeah.
Keith, I'd say your call, do you want to wait for the next board meeting? Or do you have to make a motion?
I think it'd be good, my personal opinion, I think it would be good to let the other board members see this on the next meeting. This is, to me, like, we just, we just got to see this.
Okay.
So, if it's not, I mean, but I do agree that this is the prime season, so. But I think two weeks is a good time.
Okay.
To throw it out there by March.
March, right. Brittany, good with that?
All right, so do I.
All right. Foreign language class options, middle school, high school.
All right. I put this on there, it's, it's more of just getting some awareness and trying to think about, uh, different ideas here. Wisconsin State statute says we need to offer that possibility for foreign language in the middle school for sure. But then, as long as we're talking about it, what, what does it look like for high school? I know we have the online options and just making sure that, you know, we're aware of, of some of the options. And are there other options that we want to try to consider in this? And understanding we've got a budget and trying to stay within that as well, but more so, it's, it's providing that information that, if according to statute, we need to offer that possibility to them, so.
Do we have, do we currently have an online option for students?
Yes.
Has anybody taken this up on it?
So, there, there are some students at the high school level that are taking a foreign language.
Through like Peterson or some other?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep. Cause there, there are different options with, with our NWECS program as well as our online, so.
How many students, ballpark, do you have?
I would have to get that info, I don't know exactly for sure how many do that, so.
I mean, I, I assume not enough to?
I would say more like three, five.
Right, no, I, yeah, I, there, there's, we don't have the capacity.
Right, and then you, I assume online too, you can pick your language of choice. It's not the Spanish.
Right, that is correct. Cause I, I think we, we, one of our students is participating in French.
Okay. So, we're meeting that requirement now?
High school.
High school, okay.
We are not yet at the middle school. I think a few years back, uh, there was something that was put together and then somehow it fell by the wayside. And I just want to make sure that we're aware that there's a requirement and that we're gonna try to be coming up with ways to meet that.
One way would be to do the same we're doing for high school now?
Potentially, yes.
Okay, so, do we have some, to tell the states, the online stuff?
Um.
They just go ahead and log in?
Right, so, so, uh, with, with that previous district, uh, at the middle school level, it was an online and they had a paraprofessional in there to, uh, conduct the supervision. So, that was it.
Cause if it's not mandatory, I assume the people that, the kids that take that are sufficiently motivated to work through it?
I would hope so, right.
I mean, I would.
And, right, and, and I, I would say that there are other schools that it's just part of a rotation of stuff that they're taking. So, they don't have it for the entire quarter, but.
Yeah.
On a six-week rotation, they're going into foreign language, they're going into, um, something like, uh, face or, or, uh, tech ed or some of that.
So, the state doesn't mandate that we, that we provide a class to every, every kid in third grade or something?
It's-
It's just an option?
The language, language is kind of murky, but you're correct.
Okay.
When it comes down to layman terms, that's exactly it, so.
Be another mandate without money?
Plenty of that going on, that's for sure, so.
Okay, yeah, I, to me, what works for high school could work in middle schools, so.
So, but, we'll try to put some stuff together there and, and take a look at what that looks like here.
Okay, further discussions? Okay, that brings us on to District Essential, the ed.
All right, so, as, as we talked about, uh, last year and then getting into this year, our main focus, uh, this year was to, uh, identify essential standards in ELA and reading and unpack those standards and develop a, a solid scope and sequence of instruction. Cause when we take a look at, at the, the Wisconsin State standards with ELA and reading, there's just so many, there's so much that, um, a teacher can't go deep into instruction if they're trying to cover every single standard. So, what we're trying to do is to prioritize our standards by grade level, but then across the district. So, it made sense and that we're working together to provide the best instruction possible for our students. And that's what we've got here is, uh, a recommendation on our essential standards for ELA and reading for the district. I know there's been a fair amount of work with all the teachers, um, to take a look at what are they currently teaching and what are the standards that they're hitting and really focusing on and, and what is it that they feel is essential for our students to know by the end of the year for each grade level? And that's where this all kind of comes together and, and working together as a team to come up with aligned standards.
So, this is a specific Soul Springs standard proposal?
Right, that, that is correct.
Okay.
Yes.
In other words, what we feel works best here?
Right.
That's what it's going down to, put together by our staff.
Yep.
Any discussion? Pretty comprehensive.
Sure, so, it took a lot of work on you, but. Absolutely. Staff has done a great job with, with responding, cause it, it does, it takes a fair amount of work and, and to crunch, not only identifying the essential standards, but unpacking them. When I say unpack, meaning understanding exactly what, what, what it means to achieve that standard and what are the sub-steps to get to that piece or to that, that proficiency? And then also putting it together into a logical scope and sequence. So, it, it's a year-long process, so.
And we've done this at each grade level?
Uh, that's, that's correct, yeah.
Okay, table of contents, one through twelve.
Yeah, so, all, all have been involved in this matter, so.
Sounds like a good collaboration and teamwork.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Any further discussion? Okay, Start College Now.
All right, this is kind of a placeholder, I thought maybe I'd have some, we'll have applications here, uh, at our regular meeting for Start College Now. But just once again, what, what is Start College Now? It is a, an opportunity for our students to take courses through Technical College System. And the way it sits, our, our approval this month would be for students wanting to take tech school courses in the fall. So, it's always a six-month ahead of when they're actually taking it, so. So, just wanted to prep that piece. The other piece that Linda and I have, have determined when we started talking about Start College Now is that open enrollment students, that goes back to their resident district versus, uh, goodness gracious. The other pro, I mean, why am I blanking this out? The other program, cause this is with the tech colleges. With their four-year colleges, there's a very similar program, but it doesn't matter if they're open enrolled or are students. If they're in our district, we pay for those courses, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
Slightly different, but it's the same process, so.
So, the credits you'd earn at tech school?
Yes.
Northwood Tech. They're good for Northwood Tech?
Yes.
What if they decided senior year, well, I think I'm actually gonna go to UW Superior.
Right.
Are those transferable or?
It, it, a lot depends on what the course is. There is some transferability between the tech schools and, and the four-year schools. But it, it's also dependent on what it is and, and where they're going, so.
Okay, well, I, I think it's incumbent upon us to make, the students make it very clear.
Right.
If you're, if you're rolling in Northwood Tech, it may be a Northwood Tech credit only.
Right.
Or certain ones may transfer. I mean, it's all, that's one, my problem with some of these is it's always been a little, been a bit of a roll of the dice as to what schools, if any, will take these credits.
Right, I, I think one thing that's, that I'm, I'm feeling more confident about is, is the fact that Mr. Anderson is, you know, our, our school counselor is doing a very good job in meeting with students to, to truly narrow in on what, what do they see as their career path and trying to problem solve what, what's the best options for it. Because if, if, if you're not having those discussions like, oh, I think I want to take this, you, you don't fully grasp as to what the repercussions are as far as where you want to go and how you can use that, so.
I'd hate to see a student, uh, earn eight credits and then decide to go to UMD and they just kind of shake their head.
Right, right.
It's nice that you have that, but it's not gonna count.
It's not benefiting that, yeah. So, no, I'm, I'm with you there. And I, I think that's where having him meeting with students and going through that is, is a benefit, so.
All right.
Anything else you want to share? He's, he has been.
Yeah, he's been doing a really great job.
Go ahead.
Meeting with students in classes and going through that, so.
Proving for the future.
Absolutely.
All right. Any other discussion? Okay.
All right, and I know we'll have some applications in two weeks. He, he assured me of that, so.
All right, joint EWGB and BOE, Boy of Education meeting.
Yes, so, the governance board has been asking about the potential of having a joint meeting. And I wanted to put that out there, uh, about a proposed date and time to have a joint meeting, cause I think it's, it's wise for, um, for both boards to have that open dialogue as to how do we handle certain things when we, for instance, you know, they, they have some say over how things should be happening in our charter building, our charter schools, rather. And that also deals with staffing and whatnot. But then, the final say comes here.
Right.
So, I, I think it's wise for, for us to have that open dialogue and, and have a, a common ground as to how we best manage this together, yeah, so. And they had a few things that, that they wanted to talk about and, and just start this process, so.
And you're looking in March?
That was, that was my proposal, so.
Okay.
So, I think that would provide enough time to, uh.
So, it'd be like a joint regular meeting or a separate meeting where we're coming together discussing things?
I, so, a- as I would see it, it would be a joint meeting, so we'd still have to post it with some agenda, but the sole focus of that meeting would be that, that joint collaboration.
Collaboration.
Yep, and then we would transition into our regular board meeting at six, so.
Basically, a special meeting for an hour?
Right, right, so.
No, that does make sense.
And that way, you guys, it's, it's the same evening that you have to be here, so it's not an additional evening.
Right.
I know some people like to spend additional evenings elsewhere, but I figured it probably wasn't here, so, anyway.
Okay.
Did that work?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, so, I mean, that's, that's something that's, uh.
All right.
Can put out for them, so.
Okay, nothing for closed session?
Yeah, there is. Yes, yes, we do, so, we've got a couple items there.
Okay, well, okay, we will convene in a closed session in pursuit of Wisconsin Statute nineteen point eight-five to consider employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation date of any public employee over which the government body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. I have a motion to go into closed session.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
John and Brittany, okay, you're in, oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Both, we're in closed session.